Yeah.
Well, it's all the bad ones. Was I calling for help or what?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Running up the staff like that.
Well, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order before our flagpole falls down.
I can't stand that.
We're gonna have to start with the pledge of allegiance.
Can you get, can you do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Delina.
Okay. Because we're short two members, two associates will serve today, both Kit and Carol. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Are there any agenda minutes first?
Uh, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, okay. To go to approve that, are you approving the resolution?
We can't approve a resolution.
No, but I mean, are you going to?
We plan on going through it, yes. And it is on here.
Oh, it is on here?
Yeah. You did put it.
The C six.
Oh, okay. Yeah, she, she, thank you, she included it. Okay. Good job.
Are there any other agenda amendments? If not, approve of the minutes from the previous meeting. Then move, we approved the minutes at the previous meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Justin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Old business. The BLC decision regarding the Sangre de Cristo elects, that's used for that.
Um, it was approved after a workshop.
Oh, wow.
So we had the meeting and then they wanted further information and upon the further information of the workshop, they found out that that was their only option because they were all once about the money to put us to find. So it was approved. Wow.
Okay, proposed updates to the Custer County Land Use Master Plan. It says it's still in progress with future workshops expected. Updates to the zoning resolution take press desk over updating the master plan at this time.
Oh, can I go backwards?
Yes.
Um, can we move the proposed updates to the Custer County zoning resolution to after, the people that are here with their hearings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Larson hearing for vacation of property lines and replat in Zone Four, Lot 78 and 79 in the Blumenau subdivision number one. Uh, are the applicants present?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Left make any statements?
I don't really understand what you're saying. So the thing we need to change the plot line is, we were looking for one piece of property. We ended up with a presell by owner that wouldn't split it. As we started looking for where we could build the house, it would be on the center line of the property. Property was kind of narrow, 1,200 feet deep and narrow and the two properties went long ways with it. And to build on the mountain, build two homes eventually, it just wasn't feasible to, to build that way because of the contour of the mountain. It's kind of a ridge that has ravines on both sides of it. So we proposed to change it. North and south instead of east to west so that we can build on the property and not be encroaching any property lines.
Okay, any write-in letters?
None, wow.
Public comment? Any, we didn't have a site visit, so.
No, that's acceptable.
Uh, discussion by the planning commission.
So I just want to get this straight. Still gonna be two lots?
Correct.
So the lot line goes right down the center, east to west instead of north to south like it is right now? Isn't that correct?
No. It used to go, it used to go east to west.
Oh, it used to go east to west. Oh, okay, that's what I looked at on my computer.
That's what they want to do.
This is where we're going, this is where they're at. Gotcha, okay. So it messes nothing up with well permits in the future and all that kind of stuff? Stays within?
Still, still the two lots.
Yep, stays within the way it was subdivided as far as acreage per lot?
Yes. And Blumenau seems to be okay with it.
The only thing we did was we required them to provide a easement for access to that second lot.
Oh, yeah. Oh, gotcha. And that's what we have drawn in on this, what you just, ah, okay, I'm caught up there. I was looking at too many maps getting all over my head.
Yeah, because, I mean, the way they had it originally, they didn't have an easement going to that second lot.
We understood we needed to eventually. I didn't know it had to be here, so we're good there now.
Okay, any further discussion by the planning commission?
My only question was that it was originally known as Lot 78, 79 in Blumenau, right?
Correct.
Now it's gonna be known as parcel A and parcel B?
It's the 789 by Blumenau.
Okay, well then on the plaque it would need to say which one of those is which.
Did it not say that on there?
It does on this map. It is 789. That's, well, no, it's not.
You know, the easement and that need to be on the block.
Doesn't apply to this one.
I thought we hadn't put that on there.
Because you, if you change the legal description, it'll be. Yep. That answers my question. Thank you. It might why I didn't have that swag. Need to see that.
You definitely like every T cross and every, I got it.
You're welcome.
We do.
It's just the future that that was a problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I sense this would even take care of your easement situation if it would have been left the other way to get to that.
Like I said, where to build it, it was kind of a two ravine situation. Yes, there was access to both properties from the snow brush circle.
Yeah.
But.
You'd have two parallel long driveways.
Yeah.
Pointless, yeah.
Gotcha.
We had to lift up the lot north of the land to the next building.
Create more places for snowdrift.
And actually, the, the north lot, you would have to go on the very bottom, bottom, the, the ridge just took off. You couldn't have driven up it, no way.
Gotcha.
Yet the lot has a beautiful view there.
Okay, excuse me, you all both want?
Yes.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay, that's a good show there. Okay, if there's no further time, commission discussion, do I hear a motion?
I'm moving to approve what they're requesting. I'm sure that the surveyor needs to throw an amendment in there on whatever, something like that.
I'll mess around with it later.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm moving to approve what they're requesting.
Request.
Yeah.
Recommend it.
Yeah, recommend it.
Do I hear a second? I heard all second. Okay, uh.
Not discussion and keeping that on to you.
Further discussion?
No, we'll just, we do have to explain our vote to them.
You haven't voted yet.
No, but is that part of the procedure?
Yeah, everybody votes and then everybody says why they voted.
That's all I want to do, is say why I voted.
Okay, well. Nope, you can't do it yet.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that we don't approve this. We recommend the commissioners. So when you leave today, it's gone through this hurdle, but it still has to be approved by the commissioners. We don't have final approval.
Okay, uh, Mike.
I think you know, well, we need to vote, right?
Just the vote.
Just the vote, yes.
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 I love that answer.
I'm not working on it.
Call it in and.
Okay, reasons skip, you need to move.
I think it was just a, a common sense, you know, best way to handle the situation. Well, it, it didn't really change anything in the acreage of the lots. It, uh, you know, as soon as, as soon as we knew that there was going to be access to the second lot, I think it was a good deal. Mary.
It's the best use of the land.
Kit. We solved the access problem, which I was concerned with, it's a change. And the, um, it was done in the first place to overcome a, a building problem, which I think is very reasonable. And with the lot numbers intact, there will be no problem with the state issuing a locating. If the lot numbers were changed, I really didn't see a tangle there. So I'm pleased with the outcome of this decision to approve, to recommend approval.
Carol.
Makes it more usable and it causes no harm.
Justin.
Um, with the terrain being the way it was, there's no other way of doing it other than that. It should have been done that way to start. But it fixes the problem.
Mike.
Improves the usability of both lots.
Okay, motion carries. You're off to the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's no line.
Okay. Laurie.
Yes.
Tachita hearings for the vacation of property lines and replat in Zone Three at Lot 9A, Block Six, San Isbo. Wonder Trail. FKA Lot Six, Block Six. New Lot Eight, San Isbo, Wonder Trail. Port Lot Nine, Block Six, AKA 83, Wonder Ca- Wonder Trail. Right, Colorado and part of Lot A. Okay, applicant's statement.
Um, we own this cabin and he owns this cabin and there's a lot in between us that he was trying to sell. And he agreed to sell us half and make two lots bigger so nobody would buy in between us. So we're trying, it's just a mess up there, a bunch of lots. So we're trying to take up and make it fewer lots and less hassle up there.
Because these lots aren't even, are they even an acre?
No. So I just didn't want somebody buying between us and making a mess. And he wanted to sell, but I talked him into just splitting it in half and he took half and we took the other half just.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Karen Poulary.
Thank you.
So he owned both, he owns these two and I own this one.
Okay, write-in letters? Len?
Azillion Chemicals?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, public comment? Planning commission discussion.
Well, that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Well, the last we've had in that area, uh, any wells and septic systems? Is your play of?
Yeah, we both, yeah, that has nothing to do with anything else. It's just a piece of ground. We're just trying to keep anybody off. That's my point. He wanted to sell, he gets some money out of it, so. We're based above.
It's not sitting in a subdivision?
No. Just a question, what happens to the property tax?
What are the property taxes?
What happens, Donna, do you have? You have three property taxes to assess it from that.
Actually, you'll have brand new lots.
They should be reassessed. Well, then, yeah, okay.
On a larger lot.
And it's assessed according to what you're demanded.
Okay.
And they're planning on each, any lot as a rate, so it's just adding weight into existing law.
The what?
So it's just adding weight into a lot that has an existing dwelling on it.
So he's making his lot bigger and we're making ours bigger. And eliminating this empty, like this one.
He's actually going smaller.
He's what? He owns both of them, but he's added it onto what he's got. It was just a separate lot. So it's actually making his lot bigger and mine bigger. But he owns both.
We're actually making.
I see what you're saying.
The whole site will both be large.
Yep, yep, I see what you're saying. Yep.
So are you buying half of his?
Yeah, we're buying half of this lot and he's adding it on to his and I'm adding on to that.
So they're vacating two, I'm sure your lot lines, so what do you want to say?
No, it's just gonna reduce density. There's only two.
Yes, well, it's from three to two.
Like he owns these two, so it's a reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, which is you own this one.
I own this one, he owns this one.
And this was ju- yeah, and they were separate. These two were separate.
Proposed design would be.
This is gonna be one, this will be one.
So his total, his total acreage will be a reduction. It just turns one lot into a bigger lot?
Yes.
Won't affect anything. Does he have a, a home site already on that or is it an empty lot? So there's already an established well?
I don't know about the well.
I don't know if he has a well. Says he has a well, okay.
Cause he's still building on to it.
Gotcha. Well, these things.
We have a well and everything, everything's done.
And you have a dwelling as well.
Do I have what?
A dwelling as well.
Yeah, we have.
And a dwell.
Yes.
I'm saying that.
I understand. So I mean, you got two, two established lots and a vacant lot.
Right, I was just concerned, just interested in the improvements. There's improvements on the two lots already.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're both.
Not the one that you're dividing.
No, the other one is just a piece of ground that we're just splitting in half. So it won't get sold to anybody else. And there's nothing on it. But a lot of fallen trees that I gotta clear out.
And you access off of Wonder Trail for both?
Yeah, and so does he.
Both residences?
Yes.
Okay.
And those are already established accesses, right?
We're not gonna do, neither one of us are gonna do anything. It's just keeping for anybody from.
Yep, yeah, oh, that makes sense.
Cause people are buying up just one little sliver and causing trouble.
Yeah, it should do. Or third nature, yeah.
It's not that I need it or really wanted it. I just don't want anything to happen there. That's just kind of eliminate the headache.
Any further questions or discussions from the planning commission?
Well, my friend here's ready to make a motion.
These won't even get new lot numbers, will they?
They do, new lot seven and new lot eight as plotted.
That's what they were calling it.
No, it was nine. Seven, eight, nine is now seven and eight.
No, this is called parcel A.
No, parcel A and parcel B on here.
Oh, well, that's not what it says right there.
That's as plotted, this is as rearranged.
Right.
Well, that's just weird. Okay.
You need replats, well, replats are often A's and B's instead of the new lot number.
Her deed when she sells it, if the deed doesn't change, she's gonna be selling based on this description. There has to be something that creates, that changes the name of those.
What is it, right?
Well, the, the problem is, you can't sell parcel A of Wonder Trail. Um, there may be another parcel A of Wonder Trail. If somebody else has done the same thing. Maybe they had some open space in the parcels A and B, I don't know. I, I would think that the new name would need to reflect back to the old name.
Yeah, lot seven A or?
Yeah, like a seven A and a nine A. Parcel A and B is, is, unless, what would have to happen is that he would have to give you a deed to parcel B of this plot. And you would have to give him a deed to parcel A of this plot. Cause your deeds have to change. When you go sell it to somebody else, what are you gonna call it? If you call it parcel A and parcel B, the title company's gonna say, you don't own parcel A and parcel B. Your deed when you got it said lot seven and lot nine and his said lot seven and eight.
Well, isn't, isn't it most typical that that would be called lot seven A? That would be called lot nine A and eight goes away.
Or if this is recorded, they can exchange deeds now and change their legal descriptions from seven and eight and nine to A and B, according to this plot. Cause this plot will be recorded.
I agree that they would need a new deed. Because like you said, the deed has to match or they can't sell it.
So when they report it, they do it again?
Actually, they would record the new deed, right?
No, the, the deed has to refer to an existing document. So they'd have to record this first. And then their deed would have to say that.
That makes sense.
No, that, that's why I was concerned about the last one because their, if their lot, if their title changed to parcel A and B instead of seventy eight, seventy nine, they wouldn't be able to sell.
Right, but there, that one is fine.
Right. No, but that, that was my concern. So that's why I'm standing here.
That makes sense.
Same situation, parcel A and B.
That makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would just stipulate to the commissioners that, um, deeds will have to be exchanged to reflect the new names of these parcels. In whatever way they want to do it. That would be my suggestion.
Well, I need a motion on the table so we can get them. Not yet, we gotta get motion on the table first so we have a discussion.
Do we have a motion yet?
I'll, I'll move. I move that we recommend the commissioners for approval of vacation of lot lines.
I'll second that. Now we're in discussion, so.
So is that our job to do that? Is our, our job to do that?
No.
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 That's just good advice, is all it is. Right, yes, so we are, yes, yes.
We could make, we could actually pass the recommendation. We could actually pass the recommendation just like it is. And it's just anybody's guess. Kit's just trying to watch out for it.
Yeah.
And I, I think that that verbiage in Kit watching out for is good to send with the recommendation.
Yeah.
Because he's.
I'd just like to see that message get to the commissioner. And she's aware now.
Well, maybe you can write it down for me, Kit, because I'll be the one presenting it. So if you can just write your verbiage down, then I won't say the wrong thing.
So I would like to add Kit's recommendation to the motion.
I don't know if we should be doing that.
Uh.
I don't know that we need to. Why don't we just say we'll do it?
I don't think.
Yeah, it's not, it's not our.
We don't need to.
No.
I just wanted to make sure it did go up the channels with, just like Kit does.
It's just a caution.
Yeah.
We trust Delina and Kit's verbiage.
Ah, come on, you can do it.
Probably, probably J D would catch it.
I, um, Mike.
Amy.
If we're in discussion, my, my concern is that we're, we're supposed to be making recommendations to the county commissioner. Whether it's for approval or whatever, wouldn't we say our recommendation is that you approve this? We also recommend that this be done and that be done. Now, we, we, when we were looking at our other, like the last one, say, if that easement hadn't have been on there, what would we say? We, we recommend that they don't approve it? Then they'd say, well, why? Well, we don't approve it because there's no easement. I would say we approve this with the stipulation. I would say we approve this with the stipulation.
That's what I would say.
Approve it with his recommendation.
Yeah.
Do you?
I, I just don't know.
I just don't know if that's the planning commission or the commissioners' job, either one.
Well, I would say that if it's a point we wanna make, we wanna include it in our motion.
All right, well, then I need the verbiage, yeah.
So that we get, we get it to the commissioners. I mean.
But that doesn't, but his deed, the deed doesn't go to the commissioners?
No.
It wouldn't be a deed.
Go ahead.
Instead of going through all that whole entire process, Kit, is there any way you could just come to the meeting? And when they say public comment, you can say something?
Wow, your presence is requested.
I'm just saying it might make it easier if you just showed up, instead of us trying to get the verbiage right and make it recommendation, if you just came, I'm gonna try to get on you gender for Wednesday for the meeting.
Nice.
I, yeah, this time, next time I wanna handle it differently, but I would be willing to do that this time.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't wanna hang you up, I understand where you're at. If you can use this document, you won't be able to, and I just want to make sure that works.
Thank you, thank you, I, this isn't my thing, so I'm very confused, distressed, and it's turned way bigger than I thought. Thank you.
I'm sort of willing to do that if that's.
Thank you so much.
If that's the wish of the deal.
Absolutely, that's great, I would prefer that than putting it in a motion that is not our, in our realm of responsibility.
And I wanna make a comment about your stress, don't worry, this is, this is just logistical stuff. There's nobody who's opposed to what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I realize that, but I wanted to try.
Well, that's, he's a surveyor, so he's trying to help you get it right.
I thank you guys for doing it right, yes, I'm gonna appreciate it.
Don't be stressed, we'll get it figured out for you.
Oh, I'm gonna quit, does Kit get all the time for that?
Yes, you get paid as much as you do for this meeting.
He gets, he gets double.
Double, double, double pay.
And he doesn't have to pay tax on it.
Well, actually, I'm willing to kill my entire salary to do this.
There you go.
Well, and keeping all this in perspective, Kit had a good point on the last one with the easement.
Oh, yeah.
Where we would have legitimately not recommended.
Right.
Okay? And, and that's just looking out after the whole thing going through, right?
Yeah, well, we.
And it's the same way here, where it's not our responsibility. But if that's the case, we all know sitting here that this could be a train wreck, and we'd have every right to vote no. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
So I agree, it's not our responsibility to make sure, I mean, there's legal above us to make sure that this is right. We still have a responsibility when we recognize something like this, because otherwise, everyone sitting here legitimately should vote no. I'm not gonna vote no, based on the fact of him being able to go in. Because we know this is a train wreck, just like if on the last one that was just in here, if they hadn't already had an established easement, we'd been voting no on it. And the reason for us voting no would have been there's no established easement there. Well, recommend, if they didn't have an easement, what we would have done is passed it with a recommendation of an easement.
With a condition of an easement.
With an addition of an easement, and it's no different here.
So you're saying, you're saying we should do a recommendation of?
We're getting it covered and going in there. I'm, I'm just saying, we, we've got a really good example where our responsibility is beginning in, okay? And it will affect a vote.
Well, the one before with the easement, now that one we caught in the office. And, and told them they needed to get the easement in there before.
But you couldn't have caught this without a survey.
No, no.
See what I'm saying?
But you could put a condition that the, the new deeds match the, this document. And that's all you would have to say is, with the condition that the new deeds match.
Plat, document, whatever.
I mean, isn't that, the verbiage would be very.
Matches this plat, exactly what Kit is saying, then there's a problem.
Technically, there's a couple ways to do it, I'm all for Kit to this process.
Yes.
Do you want a condition or, do you want a condition or not?
You want a condition or no?
Well, there's, there's another aspect to this, this could be in our regs too. That we don't take any action on any property that changes its legal description. You know, that we're not gonna recommend to the commissioners that they, that they take any action that changes the legal description of the property without legally changing that description within the ownership of the people who apply. And, you know, when we're doing something where we're changing a lot line and a lot number, what are you saying?
That's your tech.
But, you know, if you're gonna vacate the lot line and it becomes something new, we've already got that in our regs where they have to create a new lot number for it and file a quick clean deed that creates that lot number within their ownership. But when you have two parties involved and you're changing the legal description of two properties, they're gonna need, they're gonna wanna do, they're gonna wanna have that advice. And I think that the process should protect it, we don't need to do it each and individual time.
Exactly.
When they submit it, it should be part of our thing, we say, no, we've changed the legal description, the plat needs to reflect that.
Well, here's a great example, we didn't have a surveyor sitting here.
And I hadn't run across the problem before.
Right.
I guess, I'm surprised that she didn't do something, the surveyors need to know that as well.
Okay, so, so maybe the place, maybe the place you need to have the recommendation is in the office that says, okay.
In the process.
In the process.
Somewhere in our process, whether it's on the.
And I think that when we get the application, we need to know that this will maybe come up.
That's fair, just to keep anybody from having the problem at the beginning and going it up.
So we just need to make kind of policy in the office that says, okay, if this problem comes up, this is what you need, we need to tell them. That they need to change the description on the deeds.
So no condition?
No, cause he's.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure.
You should always have to write all this, that's the hard part.
No, it's not.
This discussion, did it need more of that?
I've done this a lot.
Did you have Justin?
Twenty-five years in my job, too.
Did Justin made the motion?
Motion.
And Mike seconded it.
That's correct, Justin and Mike, so we need votes.
So we need votes. Skip? Yes. I vote, I vote yes, I, you know, the only problem I see is what Kit brought, Kit brought up, so.
Yes.
Yes, because it reduces zoning and improves the setback of existing lawns.
No reasons yet.
No reasons yet?
No reasons yet, just yes, yes.
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 All right, now we got some reasons coming.
Mike.
No, I need to hear again.
It protects water.
Yes.
It keeps our well from going down.
I wanna thank all of you for doing what's right, and I paid a surveyor for that, and.
And they did a good job.
Thank you for, thank you for catching that, because I would have been a mess down the road, and thank you for being so good at your job, and thank you, cause it's.
Well, don't be upset at your surveyor, they just, you know.
Yeah, but, yeah, but having it caught before it ever got to here would have been.
Well, it'd have been helpful, it would have been helpful.
Yeah, so thank you, everybody, I really appreciate it.
Okay, just reasons.
Thank you for taking your time to go.
Reduces acreage and both parties are happy to do that.
It doesn't reduce acreage, it reduces.
Reduces not, not acreage.
What is the word, uh, density?
Density, that's the word, density.
And what was the last second one?
Uh, both parties are amenable to the lot change. Carol?
Reduces lot density.
Kit, ditto, and increases setbacks from existing dwellings, which is a problem in San Jose, though.
Mary?
All of the above.
It's hard to get creative when you have.
Well, those are all really good points, so.
I mean, it does reduce density, it increases the lot size.
It's gonna say, it uses density.
In this area, that's an important thing.
Awesome, all right. Well, that was a lot busier than I thought it would be. Thank you for that, you did good, no, it's a good thing.
See, that's why you're here, Kit, is because.
That's not why.
We don't know.
I thought it was just cause I have one for the afternoon.
A month.
A month.
All right. Should we go page by page?
Yep.
Everybody okay with changing the year? All right, those are just. Um, this, on page thirteen, that footnote was not even a footnote, it was just typed in that way. So it's now an actual footnote. I did, and, um. And we've changed it too. We added in this zoning resolution instead of used in zoning. And that was per the workshop, so I didn't, yeah. All right, page twenty-two. The first change was just per Cheyenne's.
Statute of research.
Yes, so that, you'll see that kind of throughout the document. Those are the, the things that she found were, need to be clarified or moved or added or whatever they needed to be, she found it and we fixed it. Bedroom, that really changed. Now it's just any room intended for sleeping.
I fall asleep in my living room a lot.
You know what, so does Tom.
So you, you should get taxed for not a bedroom.
Have to wake up to go to bed.
Well, no, wait, you need a bigger septic, yeah, you need a bigger septic system.
I sleep in that room too.
And then for the workshop, we said the breezeway was to be between structures. Uh, the next page, we talked about getting rid of the appendancy that had definitions and put them where it says definitions. They were, and they were, half of them were already there. So that, that was a good deal. So C dot, uh, C D P H E, uh, we modified cease and desist order to just look at the section. CPW is Parks and Wildlife, I'm, I'm pleased to see it doesn't say DOW, so somebody made a change. Remember it was the Department of Wildlife?
That's been like six or seven years, so.
But that's actually picked, they, they actually got it done, I was impressed. HB is a house bill, which I had to look at, see where it was even mentioned, I thought that was interesting. Um, HOA. I don't know why twenty-seven is in there, sorry about that. Oh, no, it is, it was it, oh, yeah, yeah, there you go. On-site water, wastewater treatment system. Um, again, this is. Okay, back up.
What is it?
OWTS?
IT, ITS.
OWTS.
No, it's back on the other page.
Oh, which one?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Minimizing an impact by limiting the degree or magnitude of the action or its implementation, ITS, not, not IT apostrophe S. That is it is, so it's its. That's possessive, it's correct. I promise.
So they, they took?
Took it out.
It, crossed it out and added its.
Okay?
Okay.
I thought it was IT.
I don't remember who, who caught that.
I did.
Oh, well, there you go.
I have, I have a question on twenty-six, not necessarily about the abbreviation for house bill, but do we use it somewhere?
Yes, I had to, I had to do a control F to find it, it is in an appendancy.
Okay.
It's like, whatever, but, but it was in the appendix.
I see, well, I just kinda wonder if we're gonna use the term, cause there's, there's senate bills also, so if it doesn't appear in here, I guess we don't need to have it in our, you know.
Do you want me to do a, I can do a control S for senate bill.
It might be, because some of them are, and I just think that's a good, I don't know if we have it in here or not.
If it is, then I can do that.
Okay, if it isn't, I don't care.
I mean, it's, it's probably, you know, quoting something from a bill.
I, I don't remember, I just searched.
It's SB, I'm sorry, it's not just SB, it's SB for senate.
I know, I'll look, I'll look for both.
All right.
Because in this one, yeah, it just says HB in, somewhere in the appendix, I can find it if you want, I'll send it to you.
Over there told me to be petty, so I'm not gonna.
It looks like all the rest of this.
The pen beside this with all these.
Well, at least we get, reduced it, it's kinda like reducing density.
Yeah.
Yeah. So again, these are CRS stuff. Oh, this was a good one with recreational occupancy, it had this motive. That was awesome.
There is motive, girl.
I have a, I have a question about the date on the top of these, should this be the date that we are doing this today? Or should this be the date that they're approved by the commissioners?
I don't know. Oh, I know what needs to be changed.
It'll be the date that's approved by the commissioners.
And they'll fix it, I just wanted, if you do that, then it makes them do something about it.
Okay, I'm just saying that.
That makes sense?
Finally comes out, it should have the date.
I don't remember, I don't remember if it's the date that we proposed it or the date that they approved it.
The date that they approved.
Okay, and, and you got, they'll fix all of that.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of other stuff that they, there's a signature page that has to be all done and stuff that I can't do. Right? Um, it looks like.
The next one, UBC, you brought up, that's not UBC anymore, it's IBC.
I think we have to check, it has to be IBC when we put that in.
Is, so it's not UBC?
No, it's international.
So, needs to be changed throughout the document? So international?
Yeah, that's what, it stands for. Because it is worldwide.
And there is no UBC anymore at all, so that would be removed?
I don't think so.
No?
I think UBC is totally, check that for sure.
I'll let you check that real quick, I appreciate it.
But both towns have gone to IBC, so they have, you know.
Wait, are you still going, let's do the next one.
Okay.
Okay, um.
It's just adding definitions.
Yeah, those are, I think those are just.
One thing that changed was fault.
What was it before?
I don't think it was there.
Oh, it was not there, oh, well, there you go.
Yeah, replaced in two thousand with IBC, it's totally, it's totally defunct.
Um, why did we change from P, the PC is specifically empowered to receive? Oh, it's because, that's how it's stated in the CRS, and we're quoting, okay, that makes sense, all right, that's fine, I just didn't remember. More. Um, well, yeah, but she's amazing.
Is that some CRS reference?
Yes, it is. And we're actually, on the next page, we're taking off the CRS reference.
What page are you on, man?
Uh, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
We can go back to thirty-six, well, this.
Yes.
Oh, thirty-two?
Well, yeah, we were talking about the IBC and then all of a sudden.
Oh, well, they told me to keep going, while you looked.
She blew by everything, she knows it already.
Well, no, it's because there, it's all the stuff that Cheyenne, it's the one that Cheyenne did.
The CRS stuff.
Yeah, and that's all there is. And I wanted to mention that on page thirty-nine, we took off the CRS reference, um.
Because there's no reference to BZA.
Correct, there is no reference to the BZA and the CRS.
That's enough.
So didn't change any verbiage at all, just took off that. All right, and.
And we'll get down to a full-time resident.
Where's, where, what page are you on? You're jumping too fast, we're on forty-two. All right, so we took off that appeals go. All right, so we took off that appeals go, um, appeals from decisions of the planning and zoning office. Taking off and B O C C must be submitted to the planning and zoning office by any person aggrieved by inability to obtain a zoning permit. If they're aggrieved, they can't go to the planning office if, for a B O C C decision.
For the dead is easier than anything for you guys. But at the cemetery, we have a differential between, what, between the lots that sell to, to local residents and those that sell to out-of-town residents. We say that their driver's license has to have their evidence on.
It's here.
It is what it says.
Living on a property for more than six months per year. So it's the same as estate.
So it doesn't even require that your driver's license. Say that that's your residence.
Do you want to change this?
No, I don't know, and I, and there's so many things connected with that. Do you get your mail there, do you, you know? Um, I think, I think that's a really good thing right there.
Okay.
Because that gets us past the summertime folks.
Right.
Yes, it does.
Right.
Yeah, if in doubt, look at definitions, I have found that to be true so many times.
And I know that, that, uh, there have been times when, when we have people who aren't full-time residents here. It makes it really hard. Because there's a lot of meanings to.
Do they need to be involved? You know?
Yeah.
I'll take the definition, solve that one for me.
All right, good.
Thank you.
That's what my wife's heading out through the cemetery digging up, wanting to be a full-time resident.
They don't complain though, do they?
Up they come.
Don't complain.
After reading this, I wonder if we shouldn't just leave onsite wastewater treatment system, OWTS in there. There's a lot of places throughout the document that even though it's defined somewhere, like you were saying, on the first time that, or somebody was saying, the first time that you see it, they spell it out. I think we should leave it, what do you guys, you okay?
I think so too, because that's kind of not one that you just look at it and know what that is.
I agree.
So I would move it in.
Okay.
And it was a big problem when we went from calling it a septic system to calling it a program.
All right, so we changed vault systems. Must have an approved variance from the Custer County Board of Health. And we took out the annual pumping. Yes.
Question on that part, do you need to add on here? So because on all of my out regulations, it has to say Custer County Board, it has to say Custer County Commissioners acting as the Board of Health.
Okay. From the, you want, what do you guys, you want that in there?
Because that's how it has to be.
Do they always act as the Board of Health? Yeah.
But, yeah, that's how it has to be.
Okay.
You don't have a Board of Health.
From the, the B O C C, and I'll spell it out?
Yep. Acting as the Board of Health.
Acting. As. Okay, I can do that. You want it spelled out or you want it B O C C? You don't care.
B O C C.
I like B O C C, all right. We added the bio-solid stuff on our first workshop. Want to read it again and make sure you're all still happy with it?
The only thing that I see there is maybe the parentheses ought to be after the word gray, because it's wastewater. No matter what. Disposal of waste, black or gray water.
Okay, so it's move water to wastewater. So move water up to behind waste.
You could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, waste and then.
And then black or gray?
Black or gray.
All right, that sounds good.
That's the type of water, not the type of waste.
I like it. And see, here again, we spell it out, that C D P H E is spelled out. And I kind of like it there. Important in this, in this statement, especially if they're trying to pull it for legal stuff. No, it's added, it's all added.
Yeah, that's good. This is what my line was.
Good? Um, we added this at the last workshop, all structures must comply with applicable state regulations. You still happy with that? We added the number twelve for twelve month for clarity, which River offered that, I liked it. We changed shall not be permitted to are not allowed for the light, or the signs. So there is no permitting of oversized signs anymore, they don't want that, they want, there's no oversized signs. And so we took out anything having to do with permits for signs. I guess it's just those two places? Yes?
Yeah, and all the, all the seventy, but do you guys ever do something about those oversized signs? Notify the people on highway.
Ninety-six?
Oh, I said those are still up, I didn't know.
And they look like crap because it's fallen down.
Yeah.
It, it is on our radar to work on that, but I've had a lot of them lately.
Well, the new technology.
About the way they're written in town.
Yep.
Send her up to do it.
And everything else on here, but they're huge.
Yeah, they are.
I'll give it that.
So they're, they're not going to be allowed at all, no permits, no nothing. They can't, they can't do it. We're just going to go tear them down.
That's a good. Just, well, you got a trespass to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and the one guy might shoot at you.
Well, I won't do that.
I didn't hear that.
Because that's the cap that came out.
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
You're going to jail.
Um, all righty then.
Moving on.
Green burial. There's a lot of stuff on there.
What is called green?
That's a good question. It makes the ground green.
Is that what the law actually says, uses the term green burial?
Yes.
What's their definition? I wonder what the state definition is, do we have it in our definitions, Stan?
The state calls it a blue burial.
I kind of like people that know what that is, I mean, but that, where did that come from? In definitions as well.
It is.
What does it say?
Okay. Bearing an uninvolved human remains on private property according to CRS, blah, 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 see section six point.
So you can't have a green burial, burial in a public cemetery or not?
I don't believe you can.
That's probably a good thing.
Somebody was tard on these definitions.
Yeah, I keep ignoring. Sorry. That's a good place for it though, I know what you mean.
Moving on, or you guys have anything? Good? This was, I think, the first workshop. Because, and there was an issue, and I think Delaina can speak to it, that they really, they, they wanted the information on what to do prior to occupancy and permit closure. But in this section is so small, there's a whole big appendix about what you're supposed to do. And, and they didn't know to go to that because it didn't say to. So now it says to. All right, now I need your help on this next one.
Yeah, I'm struggling with that.
Everybody's struggling with it. I'm not, and I don't know what the answer is, so.
How about the subject property must be on a county or state maintained road?
There's subdivisions that maintain.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, yeah, subdivision roads don't fall under that, so.
And a lot of subdivisions don't care if they're S T Rs. There's lots of sub, there's lots of S T Rs inside subdivisions.
How about the, the applicant has to provide a, a plan for maintaining the access? Because there are places where the owner themselves maintain it. If you go up to Horn Creek, and you're going to go stay in that lodge, you drive a long driveway to get there, that's totally a bare property.
And that's their driveway.
Yeah, that's different, that's not a road, it's a driveway.
I know, but that's, that's your.
What you say, basically the same thing. Because I mean, yeah, there's houses that are on top of hills, they got a driveway that's a half a mile long.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we had issues with one. And a subdivision would be continued, would be considered private maintenance.
Right.
Their issue is that most of our arguments for S U Ps and S T Rs is all adjacent landowners saying, then who is going to take care of this unmaintained county road? And then it gets approved because we have nothing backing it. And then they're still saying, okay, well, now we have this unmaintained county road, there's no funds for the county to maintain it, and you just allow.
Some of them aren't even, some of them aren't even county roads, they're subdivision roads. And the subdivision is supposed to take care of that, but it's up to the homeowners to have some kind of agreement. And maybe that's what we need to have is any.
Is it a thing that there's an increase in traffic due to the S T R?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, but we, they need some kind of a maintenance agreement for that road.
Would the subdivision roads be within an H O A? Sometimes.
Maybe.
If there's an H O A. All of Silver Cliff Heights and its over five hundred lots, not, there is no provision for the maintenance of their roads at all.
Well, because that's Silver Cliff, Silver Cliff page for that.
Silver Cliff Heights.
Oh, Silver Cliff Heights, I was thinking Silver Cliff Ranch, you're right.
Approaching five hundred lots out there. And they're all on private roads and the roads are owned by the individual lot owners because it's just an easement across their lot. So they're not owned by a property rules association, they're not owned by the county. And they're all, out there, it's just the great west.
I think we got to figure out how to tackle it, because Delaina's exactly right, how many times does that come up? Where, where, where all the homeowners along the way don't want to pay for the guy at the end with the S T R.
And I absolutely don't, don't disagree with.
No, I don't either, we just got to figure out how to word it.
Well, I wonder if you just say that the, the applicant must provide a plan to maintain the access from the nearest public road.
Well, except that non-maintained county roads are public roads.
Right. Well, from the nearest, non-public maintained road, let's say that.
Okay. From the nearest maintained.
Maintained.
Public road.
Maintained public road.
Yeah.
I, I like, I like that verbiage.
But it has to be publicly maintained.
But now you're going to have to say it again.
Yeah.
Say it again, come on.
Applicants.
The, the applicant must provide a plan for the maintenance of that portion of their access, not publicly.
So we can just start with general requirements, it would be must, start with must.
Applicant must.
Well, that's all in all of these. So must provide. A road maintenance plan?
Yeah, a plan for the maintenance of access, that portion of their access. How about that portion of their access not publicly maintained? That covers everything, it's not a county maintained or state maintained road.
I, I'm still not getting it, must provide.
A plan for.
A plan for.
The maintenance of.
The maintenance of, I like that.
Any portion. Of their access not publicly maintained.
You don't want to say their road access?
No, maybe, and some of these places have, you're, people walk into it.
Um, any portion of their access not.
Publicly maintained. Now, finish what I tell you and then pick it apart, everybody jump in.
Well, I just, the maintenance of is not real good English, that's all.
Okay, well.
Um, I can take this and, and wordsmith it, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
Publicly, is publicly going to be a problem? Is everybody going to understand what does publicly mean?
I'm not sure. How about county or state?
Is that in the definitions?
Well, that's where I started out.
No, publicly, because you've got, I would say county or state, because otherwise publicly it could be, well, the homeowners association or, or, you know, Joe Blow and Joe Blow, those are public people.
But that's where I started out, was I said county and state and everybody shot that down.
Yeah, but we agree with you now.
Yeah, but there are, there are people that live in portions of the county, the first part of getting there is going on the city street. I'm one of those. So, you know, you may live in the county, but you may be getting there by, on the city street.
See, you're, you're smarter and quicker than me, I'm sorry.
No, because the question was, is, is it publicly maintained if it is in a subdivision?
No.
No.
Not necessarily.
So now they're going to have to have a plan.
Some, but not very many.
A plan for the maintenance.
They just have to have a plan.
But yeah, see, the plan could be, if maintained by the.
H O A?
H O, yeah, that's, that's not going to work.
Well, they have to agree with the, I mean, the H O A has to agree with that too.
Well, and they're going, I mean, they're going to have to show us a written plan.
How about an agreed upon?
Agreed upon plan?
Yeah, like who's agreeing upon it?
They're going to have to have something written out.
Our problem children with the S T Rs, right, are always coming in the capacity of some kind of subdivision. That's, that is where.
I agree with that.
That is where our problem children are, you know? And, and I'm just not sure, you know, how, how hard do we want to try to take a, a round peg and pound it into a square hole just because people want it? You know, we're kind of at a spot right here in my book that, that you can grandfather those in now that we've already approved here in the past. But moving forward, we can really eliminate a lot of problem of, of using this in the right verbiage with either a county road or a state access road. That's, that's taking you to private property that's not in a subdivision. I mean, it would eliminate the S T Rs.
No, they have to have a.
Coming in the subdivisions.
Well.
Well, if, if you go right below that, you've got proof of adequate street and transportation improvements to accommodate traffic volume generated by the proposed development.
That's later.
No, it's right below it, right next to, it's right here.
Oh, yeah. It does say that, so we're just not enforcing it.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
It already says it and we're not enforcing it.
Yeah, you're right, that is the big problem, that is the big problem, but it's not being enforced.
But no, I don't think, I don't agree with that, because it says proof of adequate street and transportation improvements to accommodate it. Okay, it can be adequate, it can, but it can be privately maintained by the six neighbors up the road.
That's true.
That don't want to privately maintain it for the S T R.
I see what you're saying.
Yep.
So, I mean, they can say, it's fine, look, it's fine.
We're looking back to Dr. What?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not just the S T Rs, it's the S U P, like on Haven Road.
We're more than both places.
Yeah, because they, the, they went and put a gate up. They fought and fought and fought and fought because they were so mad that that way to me got approved.
Yep.
And they went and put a gate up. And so now there's only one access to get that way to me.
I mean, I think we're sitting at a time where we can put some verbiage in here, where it makes these S T Rs a little bit more cut and dry. where it makes these STRs a little bit more cut and dry. But I'll just give you an example. You know, right, Jean Bedon's old place right out here on Hermit, you know, Terry bought it. And, and it's a STR, I mean, it.
Don't count it.
Yeah, I mean, it's right on Hermit and Kettle, right? And, and then, then, you know, if neighbors like the San Isabel Ranch up the road hitched a wall-eyed fit, at least they could come in here and you'd have to listen to that. But, but we're fighting, we're fighting listening to neighbors, but then we, we also look at these roads, and we don't have anything, we give the STR applicant a lot of room to keep arguing to get this thing in, right? And almost in every case, there's issues, the true issues with STRs are common when they're in some kind of a subdivision, or they're shared roads, where there's not, not a county maintainer going up and down that road. You follow me?
Well, and the county doesn't have, you know, they don't have any jurisdiction over someone who has a private access, I mean, in any way.
Right.
You know, they can't say, well, you know, we're not gonna approve something because the fire truck can't get it.
Right.
It's not a reason, you know, they can't do it because they don't have control of that road.
Right.
And so.
So for instance.
Maybe we need to be hearing from whoever does have control of that road. If your, if your access is provided by a road not under your control, you have to bring in permission to use that road as part of your STR application.
But that's where we are right now, and that's where all those people argue about it.
But that's fine, if they don't come in and show her a letter from the POA saying that they can use that road for their application, as part of their application package. The application doesn't go any farther.
Yeah, except for that we're talking about.
But that's on a public road, you know, that won't stop that, maybe there's something else that you wanna use to stop that.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I, I just think, so you just take like, somebody comes in off the new builds on the H2O. I mean, those are just simple on, on whether or not that could be an STR or not. You go right up the mountain on what we dealt with, that guy Clark at the very end, in a subdivision, but it's, it's, the owners all share that road and they're supposed to maintain it. But he's bringing in a whole pile, yeah, and he's bringing in a whole pile of extra traffic or has the potential to do it. And, and we just went through a wall-eyed fight, and how many times did he appeal and finally got it through? Well, if we'd have had that thing shut off to where.
Did they have a POA up there? Do they have a PO?
STR.
STR, no, a property owners association.
Oh, no, they don't, no.
I don't know.
No, because they remember that first meeting, they said.
They said they did, and then they couldn't prove documents.
They said they did, but they couldn't, they didn't have any, any.
So you just had a whole pile of people that shared this, shared this road, and were supposed to help main, you know.
It was very loose.
And they were getting along fine, and then just jumped in the middle and it didn't.
I mean, and that, and so we get, what I'm getting at is that we get stuck in the middle. The, the, almost every one of our STRs that have either been approved or not, that has been brought in front of us, that have been the difficult ones, and kinda nobody walks away happy, literally comes over these crazy roads.
And that's why they wanted to put that in, I'm sure, and that would totally completely stop it.
Yeah.
I mean, because we had the one out there, oh, going up Rosita Road. Uh, the guy that was connected with Zellers.
Oh.
And he was going through a piece of property, and he didn't have an easement through that property even.
See, now that, you could catch things like that pretty quick, if in the process.
That, that raised its ugly head quick. But I, but I'm, I'm getting to where, I mean, this may not quite be worded right with enough teeth in it. But, but it would eliminate even some of the good subdivisions with really good roads, but they're not maintained by the county. You see what I'm saying? With, with this in it. I mean, you just, that subdivision, that subdivision you wouldn't be able to go into.
And that's what you want? Do you think that's good?
No.
Every one of our headaches is with, has to do with.
Well, I know, yes, I'm like, yeah, I'm not arguing with you.
I'm tired of headaches.
I'm just trying to make sure I am.
You're not reading it right.
I'm tired, I'm tired of headaches.
You're not reading it right. This only, what's written in here only stops you from having a SUP or STR, which we'll talk about later, on a county road that's not maintained.
Not an HOA private subdivision.
It doesn't cover that, or state, or anything else. It is only a county road that's not maintained.
Well, get it added.
Just non-maintained road.
No. Well, actually, what he proposed was, you have to provide the agreed upon maintenance plan of any portion of their access not county and state maintained.
Okay, I'm just saying, we're sitting right now.
So if you drive across four lots.
This is a huge motion, so.
If you drive across four lots, and then you get to yours, and then you're going up to the house, you're taking care of that portion that's on yours.
Yep.
And that's, that's all, you're the applicant, fine, that's your deal. But those other four people.
There you go.
You have, now the law looks at it as if, if I grant, you're a rancher, and you've been driving across my place to check your cows on your place for years. We've got an agreement.
Yep.
But that's just you.
Right.
You set, you cut that into 22 pieces. Sell it in 22 pieces, it's called overburdening the easement. Or you might be overburdening the access as far as maintenance goes, by having these people. So, so if you, if you say that any private part of it, you have to have their permission. And that's part of the application. It didn't even get in here.
So every person along the way, those four people, you get off the county road, and then those next four people have to agree.
Now, if they happen to be in an organization for the maintenance of that section of the road, you just have to hear from the organization. So if you're driving through a subdivision like Bull Domingo, and you're getting to your property which borders Bull Domingo, and you've been allowed to use Bull Domingo roads, the POA could grant that permission, because they maintain the road.
But if they don't grant the permission, it's dead in the water.
It doesn't get any further than the application process.
So this actually needs to be part of the application.
Yeah, I agree, that, that, it says application procedure.
Yeah, yes, applic, application procedure, it is part of the application procedure.
And we do ask them if they're in an HOA, and HOAs allow the STRs or SUPs.
And then they have to provide you proof.
But now.
Written proof.
Now they have to do the roads.
Okay.
Um, do you still wanna leave in the, the next statement then, where it says proof of adequate street transportation improvements to accommodate traffic volume generated by the proposed development?
That's often the, because that could be all the way from where they came from.
This is an SUP.
That doesn't cut it down any, does it?
Well, this is SUP, so STRs, this is gonna go in STRs as well.
Well, that, that's verbiage, well.
Verbiage, yes, okay.
But are you okay with that other statement in an SUP?
Well, and all that saying is, is the county road, even if it's county maintained, is it adequate?
Right.
To carry the extra traffic?
And it's just proof, okay, so we're good with that one?
Well, I think it, I think it needs to stay in there, because what if the SUP is a lumber mill? And there's gonna be logging trucks, and there's a cattle guard.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna. And I forgot to ask you about that beforehand.
And this, all of the other at that level are, are not all in caps. If you look at the way it was, it looked like it was screaming in the index, 'cause it was the only one in caps.
Probably based on the discussion.
Yeah. All you want to discuss. Kids, I'm having a lot of fun, but I got to be at work at three o'clock.
Oh, you do?
And it's 2:44, and this is going on and on and on. So I'm sorry, but I'm going to leave, but it's been fun.
Well, we're, okay, because we're, we don't have much left. And I will send it out before, in so if you see something scream. Do you want to just land it real quick?
Yeah, I didn't have anything else, I just wanted to stay for the talk about the roads.
Okay.
But so as long as that's going in the.
It'll go in STRs as well.
In the STRs as well.
Absolutely.
Good.
Well, it's in the, it's in the STRs because it's in the special use permit.
Do you want it both places, though? We do duplicate a lot of stuff in short term.
The STR says the property shall not reside on a non-maintained county road.
Well, that's because I added that, that was the same verbiage, so I'll just change that to the other verbiage unless you.
Yeah, so it's fine.
I think it needs to be stated both places.
Yeah, you probably can't be overstated.
Okay, although I'm against that, I'm not against it in this case. Um, okay, that's just, that's a quote, so it had to be the same. All right, you guys good with the property must be owned by the applicant for at least two years?
Yeah, that's already helped.
My question is, where did the two years come from?
Um, that's what Silver Cliff and.
We stole it.
Do you know what their logic was?
Yeah, people were buying, buying.
Because, because.
I have no idea. But I thought we'd be.
Are you good with two, or do you wanna reinvent?
You want, you want one and three quarters?
1.75.
1.75, instead of one and three quarters, okay, we can go with 1.75.
You know, I just, where math came from, it sounds like a.
I'm telling you what, though.
I think there is some sense behind that.
There were applications that flat got jerked that we didn't even have to deal with.
I think there was some sense.
That's what I'm talking about on the roads.
Yeah, that'll help. Um, skip one of the dark skies pamphlet in the, in the package. There is none, by the way, but they will be developing one for us. I've already spoken to them, 'cause I talked with them anyway.
Did you read them, them docs? To the record.
Yes, I did.
It was very sound.
What's a dark skies pamphlet, O R S?
That's the one that you asked for.
Is it O R S?
I'm sorry?
It's O R S.
Um, the I S is, is struck through, that means it's taking, being taken out.
Says, and the dark skies pamphlet.
Are included.
Are, arts?
No.
So, this.
It's hard to see.
Yeah, I just kinda see, but the R is being added, and the is is being taken out, it's.
Oh, oh, okay. It's not a new word.
Well, we can, we can make.
We can make a new word.
Yeah.
Probably, with the H, your eyeballs are kinda bad, actually.
It is now plural, correct. Uh, no outdoor flames are allowed was added, except for.
UL approved.
UL approved gas grills. Oh, this was, the next one on 79 is not allowing, um, the BZA to do appeals for the E OCC, we talked about that. Um, and that, so I had to strike it through here, too, because an STR applicant not approved by the B OCC may appeal to the BZA, so I took that out. Uh, the next one is, there's no STR permitted within a half mile of another STR, except for areas historically used for tourism. And we argued and argued that, and it was accepted at the time.
My question is, how are Shana and I supposed to know what areas are used for tourism?
Memorize the county.
I, I questioned it at the time, and I was told that, that these guys would take care of it.
I got the look.
You got the look, basically.
You got the look.
Okay.
So, if, if somebody comes in and says, you know, they've got half acre lots, and it's in San Isabel or something, or that's a touristy area, then it's gonna be fine.
You know, you got Alpine.
Yeah, Alpine.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Right, Lake Dewey's.
Sure that Yorgoville would qualify as a touristy area.
Good God, no.
I don't like any of the whole sections, I'm gonna keep them.
Cease and desist, we added that the county attorney has to be involved in the cease and desist order.
Now, that's the only place where we specifically imagine the county attorney being involved in part of the process. But the county attorney services are always available, too, the planning and zoning office, right?
Supposedly.
See, that's something that, it was a gray area when I was a commissioner. We paid the county attorney, did that mean that he was the attorney for Riden Bridge and every other entity in the county or not?
I don't know.
And I think it's important that that become real.
And I can guarantee you that in the past, planning and zoning has used the county attorney a lot.
I know, and I think, I think it needs to, somewhere it needs to be codified, because I don't think it's a, I don't think it's always understood that way.
I mean.
But that's a commissioner thing, and we'll.
I did have one more question about the STR, though. Did you guys decide not to, I know you had talked about it a while ago, to specify an acreage amount for an STR?
Yeah, you decided not to do that.
You decided not to do that?
Yeah.
So you're gonna allow STRs in less than acre?
Yes, because that's a touristy area a lot of times.
And that throws out the half a mile thing, too?
Um, only if it's a touristy area. As defined by Skip and Keith.
And Mike.
Oh, okay, and Mike and Justin. I have no clue. Um, septic, they wanted to add the number of potential bedrooms. I don't remember why that was added, to be honest.
Which one?
Um.
Oh, yeah.
Cemetery's a long-term rental, right?
Was that when, when the state is bringing that? Add that?
No, 'cause that was bad.
I hope it's not a short term.
The reason behind that is because now the state regulations, the new state regulations have in there, if someone builds a basement in their house, and they build an unfinished basement, how much square footage is in that basement that would allow bedrooms?
Okay.
So at that point, if they're only putting in a three-bedroom septic system, but they have three bedrooms upstairs and a complete thousand square foot basement.
Potentially be another three bedroom.
All right, no, that's fair, I, I got you.
Or you could almost have six bedrooms down there.
Right, so we can, as a county, we can, I can say, you have an unfinished basement, you have to have a five-bedroom subject.
Yeah. Okay, I just didn't remember, so thank you, thank you for. All right, so there's a feminist masculinity issue on page 142.
You wanna handle that one?
We already did. And then we're getting rid of.
You handled it?
All I said was we, I didn't say I. I did not say I. I said we.
Okay.
We got rid of the common acronyms, and that is it. So I will go back. I thought, I thought there was some, I missed it, but there is somewhere that I changed, not approved to, um, denied.
Not allowed.
No, denied. There was, there was one, there was only one place in the whole document that said not approved. So I did fix that, and I will, 'cause I don't remember seeing it, but I, I did fix that. So I'll make sure include that in the, in the page, whatever. And then I will look for Senate bill, and I will change the other stuff we talked about. And then we'll go over all of this again. No, we won't, will we? We have to do a vote.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll have to do a vote.
We have to vote.
The next thing. You have to do all these pages again, and just?
No.
No, just as presented today with modifications as approved.
Of both pages.
Or amendments, amendments as approved.
Yeah.
And then when do we do it again?
We don't. There's a public, it goes to public now.
The commissioners have to hold a public hearing, always before.
Right, but I mean, is there a cycle for us going through the zoning resolution?
Oh, as soon as somebody decides something has to be, no, it's usually pretty quick. Yeah.
It depends on how many, I mean, the office keeps track of things that could need to be changed. Somebody else could come up with something that needs to be changed. Just take it into the office and tell them, you know, you think this needs to be.
I think I have some things for the subdivision regulations, but we aren't there yet, so.
Well, start a list. I guarantee you that Carol's got one started by tomorrow. She's really, really good at that. So, we need, I make a motion to accept the proposed zoning resolutions with the amendments as approved.
Second.
That will get, that will get them to the commissioners. And it's going to take the commissioners a month or so to do something about it. If you're lucky.
Delena's going to push it through.
I don't think so.
Because the commissioners have to hold the public hearing.
It has to be at least two weeks out.
And the problem is that the commissioners aren't used to holding the public hearing because always before, we held the public hearings.
And invited them to come.
I didn't know that.
Right. I mean, we always held the public hearings, but the zoning resolution says that the commissioners will hold the public hearings. We just make the recommendations to the commissioners.
Yeah. And we always did a lot of those things during that. We did a lot of those things during that and we don't anymore.
Right.
That's good.
Vote?
So we have, who, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Just a second. Okay, to vote, Skip?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Um, we'll, we'll note that Carol was not here for the vote.
Correct. I mean, we've done, we've corrected a lot of things in there.
Yeah.
A lot of them have been small, but some of them are very important. You know, some of them, I don't know if we'll get past the commissioners or not.
Some of them were requested by the commissioners.
Right. We did not address one of the commissioners' requests and that was to put bunk houses back in.
Oh, do we want to do that? Oh, we do not. Okay, we're not doing that.
But, I mean.
We're not recommending that.
We're not recommending.
Are, are they in the definitions?
We don't.
It doesn't mean it's.
Can we say, uh, can we have it under definitions and it just says, see, um.
See the.
Accessory. I am, see accessory building?
No, it says D S A dwelling.
No, bunk house doesn't have a kitchen.
It doesn't have a kitchen. It doesn't have a kitchen, yeah. That's the problem.
So we leave it out?
Bunk house.
We're leaving it, okay, we're leaving it out.
Because what happens is you start with a bunk house, pretty soon it has a kitchen and your mother-in-law's living in it full-time.
She's the cook.
So it's a second residence.
Really what you call a kitchen. I'd call it the kitchen.
Exactly.
I don't like the fact that there's a huge difference between what you're allowed by the state and what you're allowed by ours. People get their well permitted and they can have three dwellings. And they can irrigate an acre and order stock if they're well permitted. If they're thirty-five acre well.
They're thirty-five acres, yeah.
And that's in conflict with our.
Our depth.
Regulations. And then it's all, it's been a problem forever.
We control it.
It's our density issue.
It's our density.
What we want.
We control what we're building.
We do.
But the state says you can have that, right?
We say no.
And you know, well, I mean, but there's contradictions in the state laws too.
Yeah.
Today.
I don't like the, I mean, it, it's, it's a problem for the consumer. You know, the plumbing code says you have to have an outside faucet.
I know.
But you're.
We don't need reasons.
It allows you to have outside water.
Yep.
So they put, they, the plumber puts on the outside faucet, they go use it there, they're in violation of a regulation, but they're in compliance with another regulation.
We don't need reasons for that.
Well, if they're required to have it, doesn't mean they're supposed to use it. There's common sense comes into play.
Yeah.
Well, and.
And the common sense is if.
Actually, division two.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was just saying, is something that you guys don't want? I mean, because if you want it in there, then I mean, it's something you could put in there.
I just think that we should put it in there and say, see accessory building.
No, I mean, like if you guys, do you want to allow bunk houses?
Heavens, no. I want it to be an accessory building. It's not a bunk house. There is, there isn't a bunk house.
I know. I was just saying, do you want to put it back in the resolution where it was allowed to permit bunk houses?
No.
I agree, no.
No, but, and I don't think that the commissioners wanted it either. They just wanted it in there so that they can refer to it. They wanted to use the words.
Well, probably that's bunk house, doesn't mean bunk house anymore.
No.
It's a, thank you, stay away from the word.
Okay, that's fine.
If you're going to use, if you're going to use something, use guest house, use, use accessory.
That's what we have. We have those in there, so.
And I think that's why it needs to stay.
All right. We're good. I, um.
That's my recommendation to the.
It's going to be Thursday before I get it to you. But it doesn't mean you can't get them to schedule. Awesome. Yeah, I've got an ultrasound tomorrow. Good job, you guys.
I'm just thinking this out.
Oh, wait, we need a adjournment.
On the Virginia.
Do you want me to do my.
Virginia series.
Your, your.
Actually, if it's on the agenda, it has.
We got the planning department.
Had a kitchen. That's the biggest ranch in Wyoming.
We need, we need reports.
It's real quick.
Not much of a cure, but we don't have to.
It was referred to.
Except that we're not done yet. We have planning and zoning.
I'll do it really quick. I have it down for you guys already, my report.
Ready?
All right, so planning department updates. Um, Attorney Dan Slater, I had a preliminary hearing about an issue in San Isabel. We have decided to go to trial. That will be January twenty-second, twenty-sixth. Um, that is unpermitted structures, um, several unpermitted, permitted structures. Water installed their own septic and they have their own well that they drilled themselves. Do you need us there? I will let Dan, ask Dan. He said to find witnesses and people that are coming, so I don't know if you need to come, but I don't know. So I'll ask.
I wasn't involved, but if you want me there, I can, I'll be there. So just.
We are also working on a case involving an unpermitted bunk house in a garage on seven acreers. Um, and then he is also doing vacation of public room document, which has been months in the works, so. And Kit has also been helping me with that too. So that's all with Dan right now. Uh, then we talked about the zoning resolution or hearing. And then Kit and I, or Keith and I held four special conferences regarding S U Ps in the last couple of months. Um, county outs regulations. Cheyenne and I have been working on finalizing the county outs regulations. I actually had them done. I submitted them to the state for approval and they rejected them due to the fact that the documents that I submitted to them were never approved in the first place. So the outs regulations that were approved last year by the commissioners were never approved by the state before they were submitted to the commissioners. So now I'm starting from ground zero with the outs. They've given me two weeks to get them in. So that's why I have not dealt with the signs.
Busy.
Well, what's, what's your priority? The signs are more important.
I think the state would like to differ from that one.
Mary's taking care of the signs for you.
Two in the morning.
Two in the morning.
I'm going to bring my.
Right?
No, it's my morning.
She can't sleep. She knows it's her signs.
If you bring the rest, Cheyenne will go. Okay, um, so yes, I've been working on that. I'm almost done. Um, once they are approved, I will submit to the state for approval. And then when they approve them, then I can have a public hearing with board health for their approval. Um, we've sent out fifteen compliance letters for the following issues. Five letters were sent out for accessory structures not permitted. Four for living accessory structures. Um, one of them has no septic and they've been living in it. In addition to a dwelling not permitted, an unpermitted R V with no septic on a property that already has a dwelling. And then one S T R, um, letter was sent out. They have no permit, um, which that gentleman was very irate about. Um, because the reason I sent out the letter was because I got a call from a banker asking me for the documentation for their Airbnb. And I searched the file and they had no Airbnb. And so I sent him the letter immediately and that guy was upset and wanted me to apologize.
Wow.
So from now on, I need to document, I need to have, if anybody calls me, like a realtor or a bank, asking for that information for the commissioners, I need to have them send it in an email and not a phone call. Because now I have no trace of that bank asking for that information. And I sent a letter blindly blaming someone for something without documentation.
Okay.
Just to cover all your.
Yeah, paper trail.
Yes. So that is our new thing now is paper trail, paper trail, paper trail. Um, also a new thing that we are doing in the office is, um, people cannot call in and complain anymore and that leaves it at that. If they call in and complain, we get their email, we send them a complaint form. They have to fill it out and send it back. They can do it anonymously, but we have to have a paper trail. Which I would say has minimized our complaints a lot.
Awesome.
It will, people don't want.
That's just one thing that Commissioner.
I'm going to call you and complain about having sent you an email.
Are they right? Okay. I mean, Commissioner Epp has just said, to cover our rear as a county, we need to have paper trail with everything.
Send the letter to that bank and tell them you apologized for not informing everybody earlier that there was not permit. That's the only.
He has his property for sale and so unfortunately having a complaint like that.
Well, let me ask you something about that. That's something that occurred to me a while back and I had somebody ask me about it. If you cite somebody for a violation of a regulation or whatever, and they take corrective action, does something go into their file saying that they've taken corrective action?
Yes, it does.
Good. Because if, if we're going to put all these files online, I think it's important for when somebody's researching them to know that the problem was corrected.
We do not put any compliance issues online. They go into a vault system that is privately owned by J D.
And it can be accessed by.
They can be accessed by us and J D.
Right.
Or the property owner, but they are not publicly accessible.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about that. I don't know if that's the answer I'll give the questionee.
So that is.
A question.
Planning and zoning's update.
Questioner.
Do you have a follow-up system for these four, these letters gone out? Something, but now they're like, we haven't received a reply of, for thirty days.
We have a spreadsheet, yes.
You do have, okay, good. I don't think that was.
We have a compliance spreadsheet. I have a very tech savvy person.
And the four, the four S U Ps, I mean, I think that we pointed some people in positions that didn't cause us any trouble. Not as much trouble. Uh, I mean, they were looking at some pieces of property that were not really suitable. And, you know, when they came in to ask for their permits, I didn't want to get them. So we sent them someplace else.
Smart.
Good. It only took us, what, three times?
Yes.
I did a project up in Grand County one time and the submittal of the application, you had an application conference immediately following their submittal. And in attendance at the conference was the head of the planning commission. And, um, they made it very clear at the very beginning that it was informal, but that you were going to be hearing opinions. And then everybody told, you know, like, like this kind of thing, want to come up if it, if it had everybody there, um, which really helped the applicant. It was a good thing.
Well, see, we.
None of that was transcribed or went on. It was just a conference about your project.
So we just, we do that before they, before they put the permit in.
Before the application.
Before the application.
It's part of the project.
It is part of the process.
That's what I was talking about up there and that's, that's really good. I'm glad to hear that's happening.
I have been utilizing key.
Well, that's. You can do it, they'll do it, can you?
Institution knowledge is lost, I don't know.
I mean, because a lot of times they're asking for things that, you know, are not going to happen. Or they've got, it's like the guy with the driveway, you know, with the access. It's not going to go anywhere if you don't have no access.
Yeah, you can't, you can't help people that create, we don't want to help people create a problem. Right, so that's a big deal.
So.
We don't have to solve all the problems, but we don't have to help them create.
Right. But I mean, so we try to catch some of that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, and problems that, you know, if they're going to have a problem here, you know, we're always telling them, make sure you got the water to do what you want to do.
There's an order to all those things.
Okay, is there any other business?
Move adjourned.
I'll second that.
Meeting adjourned.
Okey dokey. Thank you guys.
Good job.